Good evening. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
Mr. Ali.
Present.
Mr. Brockman. Mr. Carter. Ms. James. Ms. Keith. Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel. Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen. We have a quora.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Sunday, January 29, 2023 in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the Board Office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick; mailed to the Home News Tribune, the Sentinel, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly-elected Board members. So, good evening to everyone, and thank you for having us. We're here at North Brunswick Township Middle School. It is February 8, 2023, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Chiroka and Mr. Solover. Thank you.
Thank you. These conference meetings are a very special way for us as the Board to get into the schools and really get our eyes on what is going on at the schools. So it's the school's chance to really showcase everything that they're doing and really, you know, their chance to brag about all the great work that's going on. So, our group is going to proceed down to the row in the front and sit and watch, and then Mr. Solover will come and begin to the presentation. So, Mr. Solover?
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to North Brunswick Township Middle School. As Mrs. Chiroka said, I'm Rick Solover, Principal of MBTMS. Been in district 25 years, been middle school principal for five years, and very happy, and as you may have heard me say before, very proud and humbled to have been what was Linwood Middle School's last principal and to be the first principal of our new middle school. That really is an honor. We have a lot of neat things to show you tonight. The first thing that we want to show you is a little video greeting from our TV and video students.
Hello, North Brunswick Board of Education members. Thank you for tuning into RNN Raiders' News Network.
Welcome to MBTMS. We hope you enjoy your time here.
While you're here, enjoy all of the great things that our school has to offer.
Including the studio that our TV classes and club use to create and edit awesome content.
Have a great day.
That's from our new TV and video class. As we move on in honor of Black History Month, please enjoy the MBTMS Jazz Band as they perform "April in Paris" by New Jersey's own Count Basie under the direction of Mr. Chris English. While enjoying the band, we would like to direct your attention to the screen where we have prepared slides showing some highlights of our year so far here at MBTMS. Thank you very much, Mr. English and Jazz Band. Didn't time this up right. Couple more slides of some student voices. And our Educator of the Year and Support Person of the Year. Support Person is here with us tonight, working all the tack in the back, Ms. Leann Farmer. Congratulations again, Leann. And there's our staff, sporting our new staff shirts, which is a new wrinkle this year. Once again, our thanks to all of our student musicians, Mr. English, Ms. Nudelman, and Ms. Staidon for performing as we open up tonight. All right. Now to get down to business. I'm not going to sugarcoat anything for you, okay? There are challenges unique to our time and our society, as you know, okay? And we are dealing with them. There is what I would call post-pandemic collateral damage, all right? Some of it academic, some of it social, some of it emotional, and we contend with all of it, all right? No matter who walks in the door, because that's what we do, all right? Today's students were in 4th and 5th grade when the pandemic hit. And if you think about that, that's 9 and 10 years old, all right, and a crucial time for students to be missing out on schooling. So, some of the necessary groundwork that would lead into middle school was missed, and not all students were well situated to withstand being away from school structure or virtual learning, all right, despite our best efforts. And rebuilding that is going to take some time, all right? But that's why we're here. One thing, and I think back in the summer, Mr. Wen, you heard me talk about this, and that is the 7-8 middle school effect. One of the joys of our work, I think my colleagues would agree with me, is watching middle schoolers change, all right? They are never the same in September of 7th grade that they are in June of 8th grade. You know that at home, all right? We see it here, too, but watching that person emerge, all right, watching the elementary school child fade away and the high school kids start to come out is a pleasure to watch. It really is, all right? What I've been curious about since the day we opened the doors here, delayed because of COVID, of course, was how was this going to impact the students? For 25 years, we had a three-year middle school. Now we have a two-year middle school. So, how are the 7th graders going to act coming in in September of 7th grade rather than September of 6th grade, all right? And then how are the 8th graders going to conduct ourselves? And it's been enjoyable to watch. The jury's still out, but this year I can tell you that our 7th graders are still 7th graders, all right? That hasn't changed. 12 is 12, all right, no matter what you do, right? And you've all heard me say before, if you could all pick an age to go back to, no one would pick 12, all right? In our 8th grade, there are times, if you walk down our hallways during passing time, you'd swear you're in a high school, all right? That's the truth, all right? So, it's very interesting to watch, and we'll see how that develops as the years go by. We reported to you all on test scores back in the fall, so I'm not going to revisit that, except to say that there was clearly some ground to make up, but we are on course, all right? And as I tell the staff all the time, direction is more important than speed, and make sure we just move the needle a little bit every day. I'm very happy to report, though, that in the first marking period data, 43% of our students were either honor roll or high honor roll. That is almost where we were pre-pandemic. We were averaging 44% to 46% beforehand. We're almost there, so that's a very good sign. Our new bell schedule is paying dividends. It has offered us the opportunity to have some expanded academic support, more options for electives, and especially some new electives that you'll hear about later that are a little higher end, a little more specialized, and more structure and consistency for students, and less mass passing times. So, we do have passing times all day, but not all of the students are moving at once, which has been a benefit. Just added, over the last two years are all of the programs that you see here, all right? Some of them in core classes, some of them as electives, some of them, again, for support such as AVID, some of them mandates like civics, okay, and some will, again, a little higher end such as physics-based mechatronics, okay? And we were able to add four new clubs and two new athletic teams for this year. Okay, so a lot going on. Some special programs and student support that we offer, again, this is a big issue in our day and age, all right? We do have social-emotional learning groups that meet after schools to talk about social skills, decision-making, relationships, and so on. We had our Week of Respect in October, which we do every year. We have the all-new Cops and Kids program, which you'll hear about again later. We have a completely revamped mentoring program, which you will also hear about shortly. We have our Wellness Wednesdays, which we've done for a couple of years now, where we talk about things such as HIV and bullying awareness, conflict resolution, self-awareness, and so on. We have lunch and after-school tutoring, and we have a revamped ISS program that is focused more on restorative practice, okay? You'll hear about that, too, in just a minute. As for our staff, just, I mean, you know an awful lot about our staff, but just a couple of things that are different for this year. We had some survey data taken at the end of last year. It was very clear that the staff wanted a say or more of a say in what goes on, so we created, we updated some committees we had, and we added some new ones to give people a voice and an opportunity to look at certain issues around the building. And we've offered this year additional staff development on domestic violence awareness. And just last week, we had a presentation on post-pandemic social-emotional concerns from a pretty well-known family counselor in the area named George Scott, and he was absolutely fantastic. George is a former school counselor who is now a family counselor, and he came to tell us what it is they're seeing in private practice that we might be dealing with here. Communication, there are some parents among you, so you hear from me a lot, I know, but there's kinvos, of course, and then my newsletters and updates, which go out pretty regularly. On the horizon, we are updating our drama program. As you might know from previous years, back at Linwood, drama focus kind of is just a club. We're putting some more resources into that to make that more of a traditional theater program, and we're well on our way. And this year just feels a lot more normal. We were able to bring back just about everything, more pep rallies, spirit days, and things that we were doing pre-pandemic. Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our staff, who are going to speak to you one at a time to talk about a variety of topics going on around the building. Leading off, Mrs. Lanfair, our math and science supervisor.
Good evening, maybe closer. Good evening, Board of Education and the North Brunswick community. My name is Janine Lanfair. As Mr. Solover introduced me, I am the supervisor of math and science for grades 5 to 8. I have a lot, I think I hit a button. Sorry. Let's try that. So, I have a variety of things that I wanted to update you about in terms of progress in math and science, and starting with math. Our focus remains on contextualized problem-solving. That's connecting math to real-life application to engage our students. We keep a close eye on equity and access for advanced coursework for all of our students. Currently, 44% of our 8th grade class is in an accelerated high school-level course. We accomplish this success through a student-centered lens that considers the whole child within a flexible pathway. This is really important for middle school students because, as Mr. Solover introduced, 12 is 12. And so, sometimes they need another chance, sometimes they have growth spurts, and sometimes they have math and science spurts. So, our flexible pathway takes all of that into account. I'd like to share the work that has supported these efforts and our good results this year. Quality instruction begins with our investment in our teaching staff. With the return of the New Jersey SLA data, it gives us the opportunity to examine the evidence table analysis. This report provides trends of performance by standards and allows us to dig in at a fine-grained level to prioritize our program development efforts. We have focused on pedagogies in response to this analogy, such as verbal models, as you'll see on the screen. With the support of the district's budgeting process, we expanded access of simulation platforms, so that's tech-enabled learning opportunities that we already had in science. These were expanded to math and expanded opportunities for students and teachers to dig into that type of approach. The Strengthening Teaching Leading and Learning Connected Action Roadmap Grant is still in force. This is the last year of the grant, the fourth and final year. This grant provides support for continuous improvement for our units and through this work, support for our teachers and students. This research that is supporting the work of this grant indicates that PLC time, when maximized, is tied to the number-one improver for student achievement. The research calls that collective teacher efficacy, and at its core, it means teamwork. That is supported through our professional learning community time, and strategies to make that successful have been implemented through access to the grant. We've also focused this year on strengthening the capacity of our grades 5 to 8 math and science subject area leaders. So, the subject area leaders have been able to articulate across buildings and content areas in a book study. We found this time to be very valuable. With the support of our central office, the subject area leaders have been provided with resources and time in order to work together to really focus on being a professional learning activator. We have two more sessions to come, and the results so far have really shown a deepened toolbox for our subject area leaders to have shared leadership strategies to pull from. We've added a math course while expanding intervention staff and services, as you can see on the screen. Of note is our implementation of the data team and tiers of support with the leadership of central office. We look forward to seeing the fruit of these efforts. In the pictures, you can see references to a number of these things. We have a group of teachers working on the financial and life literacy's key skills implementation that you see. I'll point out the Summer STEM Initiative. A student worked on a project to develop their own speaker. So, when he's got this cup connected to his computer, it is providing what he's playing to the cup, and he's developed his own computer through the magic of magnets. So, those are the pictures you see there. We have one of our particularly popular contextualized projects in the core content, which is planning a trip to New York City using the Pythagorean theorem to understand the difference between distance between two places and how far you have to walk on a block-based system. And that always amazes the kids that you can't go by as the bird flies in New York City. The last picture you see there is one of our teachers presenting to parents at a parent academy that occurred at the end of September. We had a parent academy previously that was a STEM-tastic new year, and we had so much great feedback about it, we said, well, why do we wait till January to provide these strategies? Let's call it the STEM-tastic new school year. And so, we started that off in September. Notice that we are running our math competitions. The Mathematical Association of America runs the American Mathematics Competition. We participate in grades 8 and 10 at this school, and we have two school winners that I am recognizing on the screen, which was fabulous. They scored very well. All the students did a great job. And then we had our grade 10 school winner. So, again, our winners are Rashika Girirati, Thomas Celentano, and Joshua Williams, and we have three more of these competitions to come. It wouldn't be the middle school here at MBTMS if I didn't give you a little update on AMP. As you know, our AMP award-winning program has been making waves since we were able to bring it on just before the pandemic, and then we kept it going through the pandemic. So, now that, you know, things are beginning to come back to normal, our program continues to expand. So, we did expand a version to 7th grade that we've been developing. Both programs doubled their capacity this year by having two core classes, and the work that the students do in their builds has now been transferred to a specific elective. So, that's called the Production Studio Elective for each one of these courses. And again, AMP stands for Algebra in Manufacturing Process, Entrepreneurship, and Design. So, it is very much a STEAM-based approach, and in it, students are connecting the data that they get from developing a business to graphing, to linear equations, cost, profit, break-even. And so, it does follow a slightly different approach, and we have had a lot of success with it. As Mr. Solover mentioned, we had the opportunity to take the 8th grade students to Manufacturing Day right here in town to Cornerstone Building Brands. It was a great day. We're planning a trip to Junior Achievement in Edison for our 7th grade students. To help differentiate the two programs in how they feel, we started taking more of a green economy approach to the 7th grade program, so that they have a little bit of a different feel and they don't produce the same kind of competing products. We wouldn't want the students to be competing. So, in implementing aspects of human impact and climate change, the 7th grade program has been reworked to align with the 7th grade science curriculum, which is also connected to climate change and human impact, and their products are really taking a look at how can we reuse things? How can we find a business that has to do with growing plants? So, the students will be selling herbs at an upcoming parent academy. We've had guest speakers come in. Now that we can open the doors- We've had guest speakers come in now that we can open the doors to visitors again, and that's been a great opportunity for the students as well as the field trips. We also continue our partnership with New Jersey STEM Pathways Network. We do have some formal applications pending for our mini-grants that we've been successful in getting every year. So I'm very confident that any day now I'll be hearing a yes on our mini-grants. And the online showcase book that they shifted to during COVID. March 27th of 2020, we were scheduled to go to the State House to participate in a showcase with the legislators, and that is returning this year. And I have not received the final yes, but I've been reassured that a COVID do-over is in the making for us. So we'll be very exciting, excited to hear the final about that. In the area of science, our science program focuses on the development of content problem-solving and engineering through phenomena or things that students notice about the world around them. This summer, all of our courses were reworked with the standards implementation that was due with focus, again, on adding human impact, climate change, engineering, and any other tweaks in the revised standards. So they were all reexamined. Students also, sorry, teachers also reviewed state results to inform their instruction and also participated in updated platform training to increase teacher facility with the tools that have been provided by the district. I'd like to highlight our algebra-based physics program. That program has been in place now for quite some time, and it still continues to develop. This year, the R and R program that we ran prior has been formalized as the Physics Fundamentals Course. And students have been digging into a variety of applications. And I did bring a little show-and-tell for you in that area. So students developed musical instruments after studying wave behavior. So this is one example. A student built a guitar. So it actually is tunable and usable. And students not only, you know, studied the wave behavior, but they compared different kinds of instruments to understand why a string instrument might need amplification, but a wind instrument might not. So these are all working instruments, and the students just figured out where to place holes based on the, again, the wave behavior and the physics behind the instruments. Let's see. I'd also would like to spotlight our Egg Drop Challenge. That was a very popular activity at our last parent academy, our last parent academy of the year. We developed as the Summer STEM at the Jersey Shore theme. And so students participated in the regular Science Eight class. In the Egg Drop Challenge, it was very popular. The students did a phenomenal job. And so we're stepping that up this year. We are inviting Lieutenant Colonel Mike Castagna to come. That's a connection that I've been able to make with the Civil Air Patrol. He will be launching the event and also attending the academy. But he's going to launch the activity with the students by connecting it to the Seven Minutes of Terror. Those were the seven minutes of no communication during the moon landing. And so, you know, the idea that they had to deliver a package safely to the moon without it breaking, and the egg is their package that they're going to have to deliver. And we are in process of working with the fire department so that our finalists in our challenge are going to have it dropped from up high. So we're looking for a lot of excitement in that area. And so finally, we have our STEM update. Our courses transferred over to the Science Department with the change in the standards, including engineering, two years ago. So this is our second year implementing a number of these electives through the Science Department. And so I want to highlight two courses. Last year, we highlighted the Physics-Based Mechatronics and the STEM Aces course. So I selected the Aerospace Engineering course. Luckily, our retired Lieutenant Colonel is going to come and work with our aerospace students as well in follow-up for parent academies. But students developed airplanes according to different designs, flew them, took data, and used that information to understand the mechanics of flight. In addition, I'd like to, again, highlight the STEM Pathways connection for us as well as the Society for Science. We have, as Mr. Solover mentioned, eight teams advancing in the Steam Tank Challenge to regionals. And through support from the Society for Science, we are able to continue to support these teams in an increased way than we have been able to in the past. Student teams are now meeting with subject matter experts. And I would like to thank specifically Mr. Miserol. He met with a student team just yesterday. They have a very interesting idea about security, and he was able to provide them with very valuable subject matter expertise. And so that's what it really all is about, is the students getting more information and developing their products. Regionals are at the end of February, beginning of March. And then if students advance, they will have their finals the end of May, the beginning of June. Students will be preparing by also presenting at our parent academy that is upcoming as a rehearsal, and then at the June Parent Academy and the Science Symposium. So we have a lot of things going on. You can see the dates that are upcoming, and I provided a list of the STEM electives there for your review. And I think that is everything that I would like to share in our limited time. I appreciate your attention and all of your support for these programs and for the students who are achieving and doing incredible things. And with that, I will turn over to Dr. Alexis Rich.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dr. Alexis Rich, Supervisor of Special Education for grades five through eight. I'm very happy to be here today to talk about our special education program at the middle school. So I want to start out with our specialized programs. We're really excited because this year we started up our CBI, so our Community-Based Instruction. During COVID, we worked on community-based instruction opportunities within the school, and now we're back in the community. So our self-contained programs go out every week, and they work on their IEP goal skills, functional skills, and being out in the community. Additionally, we're opening up the Raider Cafe. And our autism program is working with our LLD, MD programs to create the cafe. And all the students are working, again, with their IEP goals to create the cafe, to organize the food, the drinks, to communicate with staff, to sell to staff, to work together. And the teachers are setting this up. We haven't opened it up yet. We're about ready, though. Additionally, they're working on cookie jars to sell to staff, so we're going to be sending that out shortly. The teachers actually just showed it to me today. It was, it was very cute. So they're doing a phenomenal job with that. In our self-contained programs, as you hear, we have an emphasis on both academic and functional skills. As the students get older, we really focus on increasing independence. And this has been, the teachers are doing a wonderful job working on these skills. We also have a pretty strong social skills program. We integrate social skills within our special education settings in addition to pull out support groups. And this is really important as students mature and get older and engage in, or in different types of social interactions. We've expanded our multisensory reading program and have been training additional specialized reading teachers. And we are collaborating with our Linwood program to look at the balance between phonics and fluency and comprehension as students get older and building vocabulary. So we're kind of working on creating a more seamless transition for students and to really balance those decoding and comprehension skills to set them up for success as they get to the high school. For an inclusive environment, we are working on our Rebound Mental Health Initiative. So we continue our Wellness Wednesdays. I collaborate very, and work very closely with UBHC and our counselors to identify students who need additional support in the building and then different opportunities on the tier-one level to support within the building in terms of character education, wellness lessons, and positive reinforcement and positive behavioral support. We additionally, this year, we've put out some wellness supports for staff. We created a wellness corner. We, we shared some wellness apps for staff and have had a lot of conversation around mental health and wellness. We offer a continuum of supports in special education. And something I really like about the middle schools, we really tailor our programs to meet the needs of our students. And as our students develop and mature and grow, we work very creatively to make customized programs for them. Our special education coach works very closely with us, and our department focus this year has been executive functioning. So Ms. Beck has been working with, with me, and we've been training our teachers on executive functioning and setting executive functioning goals for students. Organization, self-regulation, management is very challenging for many of our students, for many adults. It actually doesn't really develop till age twenty-five, so, which I learned as we've been leading some professional learning for our teachers. So we're really excited to focus on executive functioning this year in the department. And again, we focus on IEP best practices and continue to grow our specialized reading. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Denise McNamara. I am the seventh-grade ELA Subject Area Leader and also a seventh-grade ELA teacher. So first off, our department held our annual Scripps Spelling Bee competition. On January nineteenth, we had twenty-eight students. We had a great, we had a great mix of seventh graders and a great mix of eighth graders who participated. The competition was fierce. It lasted twelve rounds. And our top three spellers, you can see, are here. In third place, we have Porna Thogaluvva, the eighth, from eighth grade. In second place, we have eighth grader Alyssa Higgins. And then in first place, we had our seventh grader Hamadat Adaleki. She did so wonderfully. And Hamadat will continue on with the spelling bee. She's moving into the county level, which will be online, and that'll take place from March tenth to the fourteenth. So we'll do that competition with her in school. And then if she is able to move forward as well, the regional spelling bee will take place at the end of March, and that will be held at Count Basie Theater in Red Bank. So we wish Hamadat all the best of luck. We know she's a fantastic speller, so hopefully she'll do great. With the seventh-grade ELA curriculum, we've been flourishing with our unit so far. The one unit that has had the most revisions is our nonfiction research unit for reading. We've embedded the climate change standards that the state has asked us to start to embed, and we're really looking forward to it. We're actually just starting the unit now, so we did a lot of cool work. The, some of our colleagues who attended the Teachers College, their professional development, gave us some excellent, excellent resources through Padlet. So we're going to offer some of the students multiple lenses to look at with climate change and how it's affecting them. And they get to choose which lens they really want to focus on and research. They have great videos to look at, great articles to look at as well. And then that's going to kind of piggyback off into our writing unit as well. Our PLC has done a lot of work with looking at the Winter Linkit data, seeing what informational, nonfiction skills our students are lacking a little bit more in. And we're really making sure that our mini lessons and our strategy groups are focusing on those to best support the students. We're also really excited because we have a possible guest speaker coming to talk to all the whole seventh-grade staff. I'm sorry, the whole seventh-grade students for a day, where he's going to really be talking about the impact of climate change within, specifically, the coral reefs within the Florida Keys. So we're really looking forward to planning that as well. So I'll pass it over to Ms. Chanzano to talk about eighth-grade ELA. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Chanzano. I'm relieved that I'm able to make the slides work. I'm the eighth-grade Subject Area Leader for Language Arts. And we are very excited about several things that we're doing. One thing that we have really enjoyed for the past possibly decade, but I might be exaggerating, is our Reading the News unit, which we used to do with newspapers. But now that we're one-to-one, we've been doing it online. And actually, since 2020, we've been using Chekology, which is a resource from the News Literacy Project. And it helps students learn an awful lot about reading the news, about how the news is produced and about different ways of assessing it. And one thing we're going to be focusing on this year is their lessons on misinformation, sort of getting a little bit ahead, we think, of the new state standards. So our students should have some tools to use to determine whether the things they're seeing are actually reliable. Another thing that we're working on is Career Day. That is something that we are going to be doing in preparation for our research unit on careers. So we're inviting all sorts of people to come in on February 24th to talk to kids about their careers. We don't have any school board members or superintendents or anyone like that. So if you're available, February 24th, we would love to have people who love what they do. We already have a pilot coming. We have someone who works for a medical examiner's office. So we are sort of fighting over who gets who in their classroom, but we'd love to see you there. We're also addressing the climate through research. We're going to be working on researching things that people are doing around the world to mitigate the climate crisis. And we'll be using a research tool that we've been enjoying for several years, which is Scribble. It's the sort of thing that we all wish had existed when we were making research papers using index cards because Scribble collects everything for the students, holds on to it, and actually will put quotes into your research paper with a citation and create your work cited. And what we need to teach them then is how to sort of edit the work cited a little bit because Scribble can't actually read. We're also going to be reading Shakespeare, and we plan to get the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey's production of A Midsummer Night's Dream to our students. We may be able to get them to come live, but if they're not available, we will be able to stream it in this auditorium to give them something of that experience and bring the play to life. Our final, well, my final bit, is Family Literacy Night, which will be April 27th. We are going to be offering parents a great variety of literacy activities, and we're going to be inviting the trivia club to come. And I hope to participate, I hope I can participate in a, like, parents versus students and me version of Are You Smarter Than an Eighth Grader or Seventh Grader? And we are also going to be giving away an amazing variety of books to students to increase their libraries and expand their joy in reading. There I go. Here's Mr. Robert T. to talk about social studies.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert T. I'm the eighth-grade Social Studies Subject Area Leader. With regard to social studies here at MBTMS, the eighth grade is preparing to roll out the new civics unit, which is state-mandated, stating somewhere along the lines of every student by the time they graduate from eighth grade needs a semester of civics. So eighth grade's preparing to roll that out next week, and it'll be taught for the rest of the semester. Some of the seventh-grade students have already had that class, and some of it will be taken this semester. That focuses mostly on the Constitution supplemented by the Bill of Rights, branches of government, civil rights, community service. The seventh grade is also preparing for a hall Uh, the seventh grade is also preparing for a Holocaust unit to support student studies of Anne Frank in, uh, language arts and along with their current curriculum, which covers Civil War reconstruction and the 21st century skills. Uh, this slide primarily is outlining what we're doing as a learning community, what we're doing to grow as teachers, such as maximizing instructional time, uh, immersing ourselves in new standards and social studies practices and articulation between the seventh and eighth grade teachers. We're also taking, you know, professional learning classes designed to ensure that we authentically address new state mandates. We're also, um, in the past and currently and in the future focusing on how can we supplement, um, and help out language arts. So some of the activities that we do, uh, focus a lot on the students, you know, uh, coming up with what is the main idea, citing evidence, uh, developing claims, uh, making relevant and meaningful connections. Uh, and then this one, this is something new that Mr. Solover had mentioned earlier is, uh, MBTMS has rolled out a public speaking class. This class is taught to some of the eighth graders and it primarily works as, um, a, uh, an elective course. So students take it every other day for a semester. It's taught by, um, two social studies teachers here, John Sook and Megan North Carroll. And it introduces the students to the basics of public speaking. Um, you know, they're, they're going to learn benefits and skills associated with public speaking and how it will serve in real life. Uh, and you know, primarily, uh, you know, the course gets the students to, to do research and, and write and, and, and think critically. And something that's very difficult for them, you know, at this age or any age is to speak in front of their peers, you know, that first time. So, uh, I thank you for your time and I'll leave it to, uh, Abby Cohn.
A little bit higher here. Good evening. Uh, my name is Abby Cohn and I am an eighth grade language arts teacher here. Uh, but this school year I was given the opportunity to restructure our in school suspension program, uh, with a restorative approach. The goal of a restorative approach is to reduce infractions by allowing students to reflect on their behavioral choices, uh, and to make an action plan for their future. So in-school suspension this year is not just in-school suspension. It's two-part. Um, many students are serving in ISS, uh, because of an infraction and they are on a structured schedule, uh, which involves completing a morning and afternoon reflection of their behavioral choices specific to the infraction that they are in there for. Uh, and then following their reflection, uh, myself and the ISS coordinator, Raheem Byram, uh, we speak to the students and they get, have a chance to tell us about their side of the story of what happened, uh, in conjunction with their referral from the respective house center. Uh, in addition to in-school suspension, we offer a restorative practices program. Many students are placed in the restorative practices program, uh, just because they are having a, a period of time where they needs additional support. Uh, we are noticing a pattern of negative behaviors from them, whether it's in the hallway or it is reported that they need support, uh, in class. We see them for the restorative practices program to have a discussion about what's going on. Uh, a lot of success that we've seen so far this year has been with, uh, peer mediation and this idea of restorative, uh, circles. Restorative circles are a way for students who have, uh, been in conflict with one another to speak about the situation. Uh, and I have an example at the bottom here. It's small, but I'll, I'll, uh, share with you. Um, a physical altercation could occur between students in school. Uh, they are to serve out of school suspension for the altercation. When they return, they spend a day with myself and Raheem Byram. And we speak to the students about the specific situation. And the goal of the restorative circle is to allow students to come to terms so that they can move forward in the school building and coexist. Because following a physical altercation, students typically continue behavioral patterns, talking, using the phone. Um, so we want to take part in mediation so that this does not occur moving forward. In addition to, uh, the restructure of the ISS program, um, and the restorative program, I am in charge of the mentoring program, which I believe goes hand in hand because we are able to identify students who are in need of support for the mentoring program through in-school suspension and through our restorative program with obviously the help of, uh, the house centers and administration, uh, looking into referrals. We can identify students who are in need of support and guidance from a trusted, positive mentor in the building. Uh, the mentors are, are carefully identified, uh, and we've actually had to turn some mentors away because there is so much interest, but there are many students throughout the year that have shown that they do need support. So we try to bring on as many mentors as possible. Many of the mentors also, um, serve, speak to, uh, multiple students throughout the year. Uh, and they find time to do that as a check-in throughout the day. Students who have mentors know that they can meet with their, um, mentor at any time, uh, throughout the school day. They are a trusted adult that is there for them. Um, mentors are expected to obviously make these meetings consistent, uh, throughout the week, empower students to make better decisions, um, aid in their academic performance, track their goals and, uh, provide intervention, management strategies, uh, and improved outcomes overall. They keep a log and the log is then shared with myself and, um, we review frequently if anything needs to be adjusted or if the mentorship is not working out, we can, uh, find somebody else who would like to maybe be a better match for them. Uh, and in progress, right now, we are looking into a peer mentoring program. So for students who are in need of support, uh, if, if an adult is not somebody who they are working well with, uh, we're going to provide a peer for them to meet with. Uh, we'd like to see seventh graders matched with eighth graders, but it could, you know, be a student in the same grade as the student that's in need of support. Um, we're still figuring out the details, but, uh, we believe that this will be a solution for students who are in need of just a push to become more motivated or to just have an opportunity to speak with a peer who could be of, uh, guidance to them, a positive influence on them, uh, so that they can be influenced positively moving forward. Thank you. Uh, Noe Felice for Avid.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Noe Felice and I am the, uh, seventh grade dean. I'm also the, uh, the HIB harassment intimidation bullying specialist along with the, um, the, the site test coordinator. Um, I have been in the district for 14 years now. It's been a long time. Most of that time I have been at the high school. Uh, so this is my first year here at the middle school and I, I can honestly, honestly say it's a lot of work, but I am enjoying every minute of it. I'm very appreciative to the staff, Mr. Solover, Ms. Raffano and, and all of the, um, administrators and teachers have just welcomed me with open arms. I already feel like part of the family. So kudos to, to all of you. Um, I'm going to talk about two things. I'm going to talk about the Avid program and I'm also going to highlight a few of the things that we have done this year in the seventh grade. Uh, with the Avid program, I had the opportunity to, um, teach the Avid nine and 10 program. So I, I saw it when it first came to the high school. Uh, I worked with the students and now it has expanded to the middle school. And I'm glad to see some of the things that are happening here and then the things, the impact that we're able to have on our students. Um, recently, uh, in January, we had a guest speaker that came in and spoke to the students. Um, back in the fall, the seventh grade students were able to visit Drew University. So it was the first time probably going on campus and having the opportunity to, uh, see what college life is like. And we are currently planning, uh, to have some of these students, uh, shadow a high school student. So we're still, uh, planning that just so that they can get an idea of what the high school experience will be like. And as far as highlights, uh, in April, we are planning a, a social, not the typical social with music and dancing, uh, but we are planning to give the children choice, an opportunity, either they want to play basketball, if they want to, uh, play volleyball, cards, corn husk, uh, we try to be as creative as possible to just give them an enjoyable time. And in June, we also plan to do a, um, a field day, outdoor activity, relay races, competitions, and also, uh, discussions for a walkathon, uh, for charity. Um, I do also want to highlight that earlier today, there was a, a civics presentation here in, in, in the auditorium and, um, they had some representatives from the state and they were able to talk about the judicial system. So I thought that was a great opportunity for them to learn about, uh, civics in our government. Uh, thank you very much and I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Raffano.
Good evening, everybody. I think you know me, uh, Mr. Fano, um, the assistant principal for the seventh grade. This is my 19th year in the district. I taught four years at Linwood, uh, four years at the high school and then moved into administrative positions as a dean and then assistant principal at the high school. And this is my third year here. Came here to open a school, which I've never done before, which has been pretty exciting. So thank you very much for that opportunity. I'm going to talk a little bit about clubs and activities. I can tell you that, um, MBTMS offers our students 23 clubs to explore experience, uh, art, theater, music, robotics, community service, healthy competitions, and, uh, so much more. We're piloting three new clubs. Uh, oh, I, I guess I should click the button, sorry. I thought Noe was going to do that for me. What, I have to go back now. You're making me look bad. All right, here we go. Uh, we're piloting three new clubs right now, an anime club, a chess club and our nature club, which just started recently. We have over 150 students that participate on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, 150 Tuesday, 150 on Wednesday. And Thursday is our most popular day with over 240 students, uh, participating in a, a club. Now, we do have some kids that double and triple dip, but, um, I think those are really strong numbers for us. Uh, we also, uh, produce a school newspaper, a yearbook and a literary magazine, which is all student-driven, all student-driven, which is really great. Uh, and our students are participating in these clubs, but doing other, uh, various school and community sponsored events such as local and county food drives, the Pappas Five Cave Run, door decorating contests, our PBIS, which has been renamed, uh, Raider Ready, weekly activities, whether we're dressing up, we're twinning, you know, we're celebrating 100, 100 days, dressing like an old person. Uh, we're just doing some really neat things to get some spirit, um, happening in the building and just getting kids to connect with teachers and, and so they understand that we are human too, which is, I think, really important at this, at this level to build some trust. And then our youth alliance activities that we do with, um, with the township. Um, and our National Junior Honor Society is a group of, of really, uh, very nice young men and women who are, um, assisting with our, our peer tutoring at lunch. Okay? Thank you very much. And I'm going to introduce Ms. Nada Marsh and I am going to click the button for her. There we go.
Thank you.
You got it. Oh, Mr. Felch.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name's Nada Marsh. This is, um, my 14th year in the district. Started at Linwood and now at the middle school, but this is my first year in the eighth grade instructional dean position, um, with my counterpart. Do you want to introduce yourself or you want to wait? Okay. Thank you. Um, so just going to highlight a couple of things that the eighth grade has been doing. Um, actually just last week, we, was the first week we participated for the North Brunswick Municipal Alliance Committee. They typically invite eighth grade leaders, um, that we kind of work together as the admin team. In the past, teachers have recommended students as well, where we try to choose 25 females, 25 male students. Um, today, actually, the male group went and the females went last week and then next week both groups will join together. So, um, I did not go with the ladies last week, but I did join the males today and, uh, they were able to pair up with some junior students from the high school. They did some team building activities to kind of just get them thinking about leadership and how to problem solve together as a team. The, um, municipal alliance had a guest speaker, Dr. Wells, there, speaking about leadership and, and different things to look for or how to improve on their leadership skills. And then the focus then went into creating some sort of banner for vaping or smoking, um, marijuana that will eventually, if one of their groups get chosen, will actually be an actual banner that, uh, gets created and sent to the school to, to hang. Um, so they're going to continue working on that more next week and then I, I think it's, I don't know if it's a statewide competition or just in the township they vote. Um, I wasn't exactly sure on that. And then another program, which was already mentioned, was the cops and kids program, but its role is to kind of create a connection between the officers in town within the schools. So kind of using that as an opportunity to work out some skits, uh, talk about serious issues that the students may be seeing in schools, whether it's vaping or edibles and how to overcome that and how to kind of look at the police officers as trustworthy advocates, um, not only in the township, but also getting used to seeing them in the schools as well.
Hi, everybody. How are you? Welcome back. Um, I'm Rick Felch. I'm the eighth grade assistant principal with Ms. Marsh. So obviously our, my colleagues have said many of the wonderful things we do here at North Brunswick Township Middle School, but I'm here just to highlight some of the more social aspects. Obviously we're, we have our semi-formal dance, May 19th. We have our class night. We have our achievement picnic, which students achieve a certain GPA throughout the year of their career at North Brunswick Township Middle School. But one of the big transitions we're having this year is bringing our eighth grade trip to more local venue with Eagle Landing over in Davinstone Mill Road. So instead of driving 45 minutes to Millstone, we're driving four minutes to, uh, very local events. So that's kind of our transitions. I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Marsh and she'll turn it over back over to me and you'll get the kind of tag we're doing.
All right. So, um, for the school, I actually serve as the title one liaison with the board office. So just a lot of these things have already been highlighted with our parent academies. Uh, math has had, held several sessions. Our next upcoming one, Dr. Rich is actually going to be taken care of on executive function and, function and skills for special education students. Um, one new club that is title one funded is our social emotional learning groups. Ms. Cohen is actually one of the, uh, proctors for that, but it's her, it's Ms. Canning and it's, uh, Mr. Wolf, who are two counselors within the school. And they've selected, uh, various students to participate, um, in, what is it? Six, three, three six-week sessions and then they're going to rotate to the group. So each group focuses on one of the five pillars or two of the five pillars, depending on which group you're in. Um, and then it's going to rotate through. And then, uh, our success tutoring for math and ELA has started. It started at the end of January. That's another, it's a nine-week session. It's a certain amount of students. We chose about six to eight students for math, six to eight for ELA in both seventh and eighth grade. And within the nine weeks, they'll just be working on various skills. The teachers are coordinating with, uh, those teachers who are tutoring after school to kind of focus on what specific skills those students need. And they're also using link it data to help them determine which skills. Um, after the nine weeks are done, we're going to choose another set of students to also rotate through, just trying to get the most out of it so we could reach as many kids as possible. Um, and that's it, right? Or you have, you have one more.
Hi, guys. Hello again. Um, one of my other fortunate benefits of perks of my job is the overseeing athletics. So athletics were a very important part of my life growing up. And so I am very happy that is one of my roles here where it is a, an amazing place for certain young men and women to get part of the school and showcase their talents in a very positive way. And I don't know if some of you have been out to see some of the young men we have in our building here, but just the athleticism, the work ethic, the desire that some of these students instill on the courts and the field is truly amazing. Like I thought I was a semi-decent athlete growing up. Some of these things these kids do on these fields is just truly amazing. So obviously the big thing transition we've had this year is we've introduced two new sports, our volleyball teams, the girls and boys volleyball, which has been a welcome addition to our school here. But the big transition, the big thing I'd like to emphasize is- But the big transition, the big thing I'd like to emphasize is the number of increased athletes we've had in the building, where our numbers in the second bullet have just grown tremendously and that definitely, we're definitely transitioning back from that whole COVID thing with hopefully, I don't even have that on the slide anymore, but obviously we had a couple, one of, one of our wrestlers did very well in the tournament this year. And then minimal issues of COVID, we're still struggling with some of the buses, just getting the, the amount of people in the workforce for the buses, but hopefully I don't even have that on the slide next, uh, two years from now. So thank you very much. It was a pleasure speaking with you guys. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Solover. Oh, yeah. Bye, Ms. Marsh.
Bye.
Yeah. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Solover.
Our boys' basketball team has one loss and that was a fluke. All right? But you talk about competition, what Ms. McNamara said was true. At Spelling Bee, those last couple of rounds, man, that was dicey, let me tell you. I think everyone was sweating in here, that's for sure, but it was fun to watch, that's for sure. So we're running a little long. I apologize, but I'm here to wrap it up. So on the horizon, we have our career day, which you heard about. We have a mural being painted by some of our advanced art students. It's going to be put on one of our walls in this hallway. Stay tuned. The Wellspring Center for Prevention, we have a very good relationship with them. They were here, as Ms. Marsh said, in the fall to talk to parents about vaping. They're going to come back to speak to our students about substance abuse. We have tune-up meetings, which are an annual thing at about a halfway point of the year. We bring grades in a little at a time to talk about behavior tune-ups, expectations, HIB, bullying, so forth. We're looking to bring back the student-staff basketball game and we're going to try something new this year, I think, called the volleyballathon, which would be during the day. Both would be charity fundraisers that we hopefully, hopefully split with our PTSO. If you want to see a great night, come to our Honor Society inductions. It's a brief ceremony. It's not very long, but it is a very nice night and you get to see the best of the best. It's really, really a nice evening. We have our spring concerts. We are, again, updating our spring musical. We're doing High School Musical on March 31st, but you'll hear more about that. Our science fair, which Mrs. Neffert talked about, Pi Day on March 14th, of course, even I know that. Our, and the annual district art show will be here. Spring sports are right around the corner. One of my favorite days of the year is when I walk down the hall and I start hearing those mitts popping in the gym. Then I'm like, all right, spring's coming. And then the seventh and eighth grade events that you heard about. Before I wrap up, one of our biggest focuses, I think you saw a lot this year about establishing connections, all right? And one thing, kind of what we gleaned from last year coming into this year, was the need for connections. The need for kids to feel like it was okay to, I don't want to say surrender to school, but relax and let school back into your life, all right? Not all your life is on a screen, okay? And it's, it's okay to be a kid and go to a pep rally and laugh and have a good time. And it's okay to try out for a team, right? It's okay to do your homework, right? It's okay to do these things and be a part of the life of the building. And we are starting to see those things come back and that's where our efforts are. As I said, we don't hide from our issues, all right? There's always been issues in middle school, even when we went, right, Rich? Absolutely. Okay? And today's no different. You know, maybe a little bit more intense thanks to social media and some other things, but you know, every year I've closed this, my portion of this meeting by saying, we're not the perfect school, but we're trying, all right? And you know, when there's a problem, we don't run and hide. We don't, okay? And we try to hit it head on and we've got a great team to do it. I want to thank you all for everything tonight. Thank you for listening to us for a little bit too long. I'm sorry about that. Have a great night.
Does anybody have any questions? Do you have any questions? Yes.
Mr. Solover and team, we just want to thank you all for your time and attention to really sharing with us and painting a really truly broad and expansive picture of, of the great work that's going on here at MBTMS. And you know, as an educator, you know, I always said there was a very special place for those people who, who love middle school students. It's a challenging times, they're wonderful kids, but it is a challenge and, and if you have that, that gift to really work with those kids and to, to, to work with them at that time in their lives, it really means a lot. And so thank you guys for your time and thank you for all the, the efforts that you give to helping our students grow and to develop into those high school students that we want them to be and to have, I think, a wonderful time while they're doing it. There's a lot of really exciting things going on here. Would anybody else like to add or make an additional comment?
I'd just like to say one thing. So thank you very much to all of you for sticking around tonight. We realize the lateness of the hour. The life of a 12, 13, and 14-year-old is never a dull one and we started doing these meetings in the schools several years ago because oftentimes, more than not, we didn't have a child in a particular school, so you'd never really know what's going on. We thought it'd be a good idea to continue that process this year. So while some of us may have an eighth grader or a seventh grader, shout out to all of you who deal with mine, thank you very much. Many of us don't. So to hear the great things that are going on here on a day in, day out basis in all of your areas is wonderful. So thank you for all you're doing and thank you for all you'll continue to do. We really appreciate all of you. And with that, we'll continue with our brief agenda. Any old business or new business this evening?
No.
With that, we'll open it up to the public. We have one public session this evening. Anyone who wishes to discuss anything with us could come forward at this time. Please sign in and you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, would someone please move to close the public portion of the meeting?
Someone move. Set up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public session is closed.
And with that, would someone please move to adjourn the meeting?
Someone move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you again. Have a good night, everybody.